Raise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the January 2025 meeting of the Phillips Town Plan Board. Call the roll, please, Cheryl.
Joe Burden. Dennis Gagnon.
Here.
Peter Lewis. Laura O'Connell. Neil Tomlin.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
And Neil Sutton.
Here. Well, welcome to everyone. Greetings to 2025. Maybe it'd be a whole lot better than 2024 was. I think already we have some indications that maybe it won't be so bad. I'm actually really happy in some ways to see the progress this board helps provide in this community. If you drive by the formerly known as the Garrison Golf Club, you see a lot of development in buildings and fences and there's some real progress going and I think we've had a little bit of contribution to that, which I hope will be great for the community. So, on to a great 2025 and a hopefully short meeting this evening. Minutes? Were the minutes distributed? No, I didn't think so. Okay. Okay, I didn't think so. Okay. Steve, could you weigh in on Vasta, please? Because I feel like after, as Ms. Vasta in her communication provides, she reminds us this has been going on for several years and we keep running into violations and pauses that are some acts of omission and acts of commission. So you just catch us up on where we need to go at this point on Vasta?
Sure. There was, anyway, I'm not sure if it went forward or if it's been decided or not, a second application for a variance, I believe it was lot coverage, to the zoning board of appeals. There remains pending before this board the ODA approval and I believe it's site plan for the project. For subdivisions, you have a provision in your code that says that you cannot grant approval if there are outstanding violations. There is no such provision in regard to ODA roads or site plan. However, this board has consistently, for as long as I've been here and probably longer, taken the position that unless a grant of site plan will cure the outstanding violation, it will not process applications with outstanding violations. It's not a matter of law, it's just a matter of practice. Ms. Vasta came back before this board, I believe the outstanding violation believe the outstanding violation is that they place millings and fill on the property, including over intermittent water course. They did not want to remove the millings and fill because it would be costly to do so. So instead, they talked with the building inspector and suggested that they bond the cost that it would be, that it would take to remedy the outstanding violation. This board considered that solution and decided against it. So as things stand, in order to comply with the practice of this board, they are going to have to cure the outstanding violation on the property in order to go forward with the ODA road and site plan application. Not so before the zoning board. Zoning board is there to cure violations and they can require as a condition of granting other variances that existing violations be cured. So they're probably going to be able to go forward before the zoning board. They probably are not going to be able to go forward before this board unless they cure the outstanding violations. Unrelated, well, I guess a little related, the CB has asked for a meeting to discuss the ODA regulations as well as the overlay district, I forget the name of it, the two roads that are existing. I suppose the Vasta application would be at least mentioned in passing in that discussion. But in terms of her application, they have to, they have to cure the outstanding violation to get the approvals they need to build.
Okay, so I don't know if this requires a vote, but I think a communication from you on behalf of this board to Ms. Vasta to clarify where we stand would be very helpful. Her memo that she sent us later on December 19th effectively asks us to move forward and she actually cites you. Mr. Gaba mentioned that we can still proceed with resolving any outstanding issues that are under the board's review as quickly as possible.
Yeah, by bonding the outstanding violation, but she, her request was denied. Her other alternative to move forward would be to cure the outstanding violation.
So could you provide a memo and I'm happy to sign it under my authority to her that states that very clearly?
I'd be happy to do.
Thank you. Do you recommend a vote on that?
It's not strictly speaking necessary, it's just a communication to them. If you want to have unanimous from the board or by majority at least of the board, feel free to do so.
Any comments?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just take a vote. All in favor of a message from Steve to Ms. Vasta on her application, the need to clarify the violation before moving forward. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Steve, if you wouldn't mind?
I'll take care of it.
Thank you very much. All right, great. All right, let's go on to the public hearings. We have a continuation of the public hearing from the Hudson Highlands Reserve. I'm not going to subject you to reading it. Cheryl, is anyone here to speak? Sorry? Anyone to speak on Hudson Highlands Reserve? Ma'am, unless you guys want to say something first?
No, no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, Justice Seabird of Canvey, T.C., on the Avenue Road LLC. We were here last month, public hearing open. This is, again, an optional public hearing on final. We heard comments on the HOA documents. We are taking those into account. We're here tonight. You were told to talk about the conservation easement. Those were the comments to be elicited from the public. We do have the pond management plan and we have Mr. Garfinkel's comments to those. Mr. Watson will speak to those, but those comments are acceptable to us and can be folded into the plan. So with that, if there are comments, I ask that they be heard and that in the public hearing be closed.
So ma'am, would you like to take the stand, just, or stand the podium, the microphone, whatever it is, your 15 minutes of fame, name and address would not hurt?
Good evening. My name is Susan Anzback and I and others are pleased that the town has agreed to hold the conservation easement in the Hudson Highland, excuse me, reserve property, the first conservation easement in our town. I am concerned, though, about the proposed funding for the easement. I understand that the town board has apparently agreed with the HHR applicant to fund the conservation stewardship and the defense of the easement on an annual basis rather than in perpetuity, which is the standard for these types of easements. Since the town board often looks to the planning board for guidance on these issues, I would like to propose a compromise in this area. I suggest that the planning board ask the town board to consider having the applicant put five years' worth of funds to be held in escrow. Without such a reserve, if a conflict does arise, the town may have to ask the HOA for more money, even though it's likely the cause of the conflict may be the HOA, and the town will have to incur administrative or legal costs should they not get additional funds to defend the easement. There may be many issues going forward between the HOA and enforcement of the easement. However, getting adequate funds to protect the easement doesn't have to be one of them. I want to thank this board for their ongoing efforts to protect the public interest in the current development going on in Phillips Town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once. Going twice. Okay, motion to close. Oh, you're like, this is what, you want, sold! You don't, that's what, you, you really shouldn't do that in an auction house or in a public hearing. Susan, did you want to speak again? Why don't you come back to the mic, please, just for the, just wait to the mic for the people at home.
Okay. I did see in the agenda and the correspondence that the town, I guess engineer, had responded to the Omar Pond proposal and I wondered if the board was going to discuss that tonight because clearly the town had many concerns with the proposal as submitted.
When we close the public hearing, we're going to go through the list of outstanding topics.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant, thank you, okay. All right, one more time, I'm going to do this. Jason, sit on your hands. Going once, going twice. Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, you didn't look like you were, I didn't know which direction you were going to go. You were giving me a look there. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes, hearing is closed. Thank you for your comments, Susan. Let's start with Aaron. Aaron, you want to walk us through the conditions for approval and what is outstanding from your perspective at this point?
Sure. So I have a memo that was sent around last month. It's dated December 13th. I re-sent it around before the meeting. There's a table in there that has all of the conditions that were part of the September 2023 preliminary subdivision approval resolution. There's about 18 of them. And what we've done is we've highlighted in gray those that, you know, in talking with Steve, Ron and I talking, we determined that these are conditions that we feel should be met now before a final subdivision resolution is put together and
Why don't you just itemize them?
Sure. The first one is the conservation easement agreement being accepted by the town board as well as the planning board.
So what's outstanding about that, that we haven't, we haven't accepted it yet?
Correct. The town board has as of, I believe it was December 11th, according to my notes. So obviously you continued your public hearing to talk about that particular item. So you have yet to officially accept it.
Let's pause there then. So Steve, is that something we can just bang out now?
Yes, conservation easement I found to be acceptable. The town board has accepted it. If this board finds it to be acceptable, that would be able to check that particular item off.
Okay, so if I can make a simple motion on that one at this point. Let me see if there's a motion and a second for accepting the conservation easement and keeping what the town board has done.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis, second.
Well, can I just say something?
Yeah.
Okay. So I need a comment, the last time we were discussing this, that there was some inconsistencies between the HOA and the, I think the conservation easement in terms of the roaming, like whether dogs and cats could roam around on the property, you know, unleashed. I know that seems funny. I see you're laughing, but actually it's really important. You can't have a conservation easement if you have, you know, domestic animals. I mean, they, I've said this many times, my husband does the amphibian crossings and every year we have like thousands of amphibian, we have very rare amphibians here in this area and lots of wildlife that's very unique to the area. And dogs and roaming cats kill them. That's just a fact. It's important. I know it sounds funny probably to other people, but it's not funny to me and I think to a lot of people who care about wildlife.
The actual rules do prohibit.
Right, right, I saw, right.
And I, I would have no objection to placing a very short phrase, either in paragraph 4.1 or in paragraph 4.2D, which is pedestrian trails, indicating that all domesticated animals have to be either on a leash or under some form of restraint.
Perfect.
I, we can put that in and subject to that change. We're ready to go.
Okay, excellent. And especially around the pond where, you know, there's turtles, frogs, salamanders.
If it's okay, if the motion, I think Mr. Gaba and I can work out, it's a very short phrase.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for taking it seriously. I really appreciate that.
It would be, Steve, probably in paragraph 4.1.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
All right.
And what I propose would be in paragraph one, we could include the language for access by leashed pets, semicolon, no domestic animals shall enter upon or traverse the open space property, capital O, capital S, capital P, in the absence of an owner and without a leash.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Okay, so we had a motion from Dennis and then you had the point. So anything else?
Nope.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Any discussion beyond the point? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, conservation easement is accepted by the planning board. Okay, back to you, Aaron.
Sure. The next one is the acceptance of the HOA documents. There's quite a few of them by the town board and the planning board. The town board, I don't believe has accepted them formally yet. They did? Okay, good. But the planning board still has not and of course, you know, this public hearing was related to that as well.
Aaron, are there any outstanding issues that, from the work we've done?
So, no. So back when we first got the drafts of these, I had reviewed those for language that specifically came out of the SEER findings to make sure it was in there. And I found, you know, the applicant provided a chart, which is helpful to find everything and I found those to be acceptable. I think Steve had some, some comments on just the legal framework side of things that the applicant has seen, but from my end, I'm good with, with what they say for environmental.
Again, I have Steve's comments. A number of those comments, I think if we go through the, all of the, all of the documents and there are a lot of them that they're there, there are a couple that we will supplement. There was a suggestion that the tree removal provision, there'd be some sort of process built in. We don't have it completely done, but our idea is to fold it into the jurisdiction of the HOA's architecture review board and give them authority and make it incumbent upon tree removal to go to them for approval. And just to, just to confirm, there's a, the issue on the 140-foot Omar Pond buffer, I think we can just, I think it's in there, but I think we can make it a little more expansive or a little, a little more clear.
Just in between all documents, probably. Because I saw it and I didn't have an issue with what it said.
Yeah, so I'll say with the HOA documents, I'd suggest doing one of two things. If you're ready to approve, approve. I, you know, subject to final review by Mr. Gaba. I think, I think that's really the best way.
Generally, I'd rather not approve something unless, I approve things after Steve, not before Steve. Why don't, why don't we just?
Then I have a second suggestion.
Yeah, sure.
If this is something that is going to need approval, I would suggest if we could begin, at least to begin to work on a resolution of conditional final with an anticipation
You obviously went to the Glenn Watson school of let's get one thing ahead of the other thing, which I admire and I appreciate being advocate for your client.
From the master.
No, he's a master, there's no question. And I would want him in my corner in everything I do for my property, but let's just hold off on that for a moment. Could you react at all to Ms. Anzback's comment that she made earlier?
Yes, we did negotiate these terms with the town board and the suggestion that it's not perpetual, no, that there's a, as long as that conservation easement is on file, the HOA is under obligation to make those payments annually. There will be an escrow that must be kept intact for at least one year. If it's depleted, it has to be renewed. The, there is a provision that Mr. Gaba and I went back and forth and we agreed to that there is an overage provision. If you have a year where, say, there's some pond testing expenses or something that exceeds that 18,000, we have to pay that. The 18,000 will be revisited on a five-year interval in the, just to make sure things are kept up, you know, with regard to exact costs. And the town has the authority to pursue collection. It has, if it does so, we're, and it prevails, we're responsible for attorney's fees, for costs, for paying it. So I think all of those protections are in place.
Most important part of it. If I could just jump in, Neil. The difference between this conservation easement and other conservation easements is this conservation easement is being held by a taxing entity for property within its jurisdiction. If the money that is owed by HHR, the HOA, for HHR, isn't paid, the town can levy the outstanding amount on the tax bill for the properties in the subdivision and it will get paid by the county and the county will get a tax lien on the properties that it can foreclose. The town is without question going to receive payment on this. Now, it may take a few months because it has to go through the tax process, but you have all these other protections in place as well. And as Judge pointed out, the town could sue. If it had a mind, it would be entitled to attorney's fees if it, if it had to do so. Other entities that take conservation easements don't have taxing authority. So they do need to be concerned about where the money is going to come from, but the town does have it. So there's no need for it to ask for five years or, or fully funding of the amount that it's going to take to inspect this property over the years. So the town board found that the financial setup is adequate and my advice to the board is that it is, there's no need to acquire additional deposits of funds.
Okay, and Steve, can you just weigh in on the comment about the effort necessary to finalize these HOA documents? I mean, counsel?
There needs to be a substantial rewrite of a couple of sections. For the most part, they're fine, but there are a couple areas where there need to be some tweaks made either in terms of putting in a provision for removal of trees on property, as was pointed out, a couple of things that need to be harmonized with what's in, you know, not only the conditions, but also in the conservation easement. I would like to see either a red line or just another redraft, a red line would be best, but of this before the board acts on it. You really need to make sure that it's done right if you're going to approve it.
I assume you're going in line with that? Okay, fine. All right, great. Aaron, continue, please.
There's three more and two of them are kind of tied together. It's the town engineer's acceptance of the construction drawings as well as the SWIP, which includes measures to monitor Clove Creek during construction. So Ron, I don't know if you want to weigh in on where you are with that.
Yeah, I'm still resolving with the design engineer, the applicant's consultant, the resolution of outstanding issues relative to both the drawings and the SWIP. So then that's strictly a technical review. It's likely going to get ironed out within the next month or so, but it's not yet completed. But typically the board, since it is only technical in review and you await, my guidance is to when those matters are resolved. They're typically set as conditions of approval in most any resolution you pass.
Does it get passed through to the final approval or does it need to be done before that?
No, no, it could be a condition on final.
So Ron's indicating those can fall into the category of several others in the table that could carry over to final.
I get, we could hold off on signature until that's done.
Yep.
Okay, and then final.
The last one is the planning board's review and acceptance of the Omar Pond management plan to be prepared by a lake management firm. The applicant did submit that for this meeting's deadline and I requested Max Garfinkel review it since it's really under his jurisdictions, especially because the town is going to be holding the conservation easement now. That wasn't originally known during SEER, now it's official. And he's going to be responsible for a lot of the inspections and monitoring of that too. So I left that to him and he provided a memo for you that has some comments that he thinks the board, the applicant needs to make some changes before he's accepting it.
Okay, well, do you have your, is your pond management person here?
No.
I mean, this, it would take about 40 seconds to read this memo from them, so I'm.
I've been through the memo and I, I have a letter for you. I can, I think I want to read it just because it's, I want to make sure the points get across. It's not very long. And I present this on behalf of the Horton Road LLC and we're asking, we are requesting that acceptance of Omar Pond magnetic management plan be conditioned on final approval, be conditioned on final approval.
I'm sorry, I, Dennis was coughing. Can you just say who wrote this first?
I wrote this letter.
Oh, you wrote, okay, fine, sorry, sorry.
I reviewed Max's thing.
Yeah.
I talked with the owners. I find this to be, I'm not going to read, I find this to be analogous to Mr. Gaynor's work on the SWIP and Mr. Gaynor's work on, on the engineering is highly technical. I also make the point that other things of a legal nature are often put in this category for, for, for Mr. Gaba and most specifically maintenance agreements for private roads in HOA documents and certain easements that, that are shown on a plat that have to be, the descriptions have to be prepared and the documents have to be prepared. And they often survive, they often survive the adoption of the final approval and they have to be fulfilled before you sign the plat. And I'm suggesting and requesting that the pond maintenance plan be put in the same category and that its final approval be after, be at the time.
I hear you, Glenn, and that, that may be fine, but the reality is we just all agree that the HOA documents need to be.
I wasn't asking about the HOA documents. I'm just, I was just trying to show you the various analogies that support the pond management plan being in that category.
I'm fine with, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'd like to maybe hear Max's view, but do you have a view?
Max's view or my view?
Your, go ahead, your view, you're you.
I mean, it's certainly possible to, to carry over a lot of these. Again, the important thing to remember is that, you know, when you grant a final subdivision approval with conditions, it just means that you, as the chair, you can't sign that final plat until that's all that's satisfied. So the board will get another chance to review all of this. It won't be in a, through a public hearing process, it will just be administrative.
But the tall pole in the tent is the, is number two, the HOA documents.
That's correct, right.
So it doesn't really matter if we put the pond management piece. We're not going to move on final approval until that's done because we've all agreed on that 10 minutes ago.
And also the pond management plan, you know, the idea behind it from the SEER process was that the HOA would hire this firm to do this annual monitoring and reporting.
Look, I looked at this, I know you guys have a different view. I looked at this page and a half. It was pretty like, we're going to look at it every so often. I don't have much to say about it.
I'm not familiar with this type of plan, so I'm looking at it. It seems to make sense, you know, if it can be enforced during that period.
But do we need to wait till it's completed? Till Max is happy with it?
I think what Glenn is saying is.
Right, we don't have to.
He's saying that we can do, we can vote to have final approval, conditional on this pond plan being accepted and I won't sign it, just like I wouldn't sign about the latest drawings from, to Ron, the technical part, until those are all resolved. And what I'm saying is I don't have a strong opinion about that, Glenn, because the tall pole in the tent is the HOA documents that we just said we're not going to push forward on anyway. So regardless of whether we wait, we're going to still get the HOA done. So we can't take action tonight.
Correct.
So you guys disagree? I mean, of course you disagree, but.
We could ask you to, to prepare a resolution.
Let's get the HOA documents done. When my, when my attorney says he needs to see a real red line version, I'd like to get that done. We've all agreed as a board, we'd like to wait till that is done.
I guess our point is at least if you direct the drafting of a, of a conditional final resolution, it begins that process so that we're just.
We're still going to, we're not, we just agreed, we're not going to, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself. Maybe I'm not catching on this. The second point on this page is that the HOA documents accepted by the town board and the plan board. The town board has done it, the plan board has not. Our attorney said he wants to look at the documents in greater detail. That I'd like to have done. We've all agreed, we don't want to go to that conditional vote until we have that done. So.
I'm not asking for a vote.
Yeah. Yeah, but it is a vote. I got to direct, to direct him, we take a vote. That's what we do. To direct him to provide final resolutions, that requires a vote.
Yeah, but that final resolution is just a draft until.
Is there, can I get a motion to produce, can resolutions at this point? I feel like I'm not going to get a motion or a second.
Okay.
You guys have tried. Your client is, I'm sure, very happy by your advocacy.
It's not happening.
And it's not happening. All right.
I guess I didn't learn from the masters.
Well, you tried. No, Glenn's move is he tries. Glenn, oh, good effort. Everyone gives you attaboy. Okay.
Tough act to follow.
Anything else?
No, not from me.
Okay, so Steve, you've got the mission to work with clients' counsel to get this settled in so we can bring this to a resolution the next meeting. Is it additive to the thing we're talking about? Because we already just said we're not going to vote on it. So if you're going to come up and ask me to vote again, then we already talked about that. Okay, take the vote.
So it's just, uh, on, um, as a response to Heidi's, uh, request of getting a dog run. And I don't think we have, uh, addressed that, so we will have a dog run. Uh, and the next set of drawings will have that within the, um, septic system fields, like, that's it.
That's excellent. Thank you. That's great. Thank you so much.
Okay, anything else? Aaron?
None on this application.
Steve?
Um, the only outstanding thing, and I don't wanna prolong this, but what is the importance of having the Almar Pond, um, Preservation Plan not part of the preliminary approval satisfied as a condition? Well, is there a reason to carry it through as a condition of final? I mean, how long's it gonna take? I, having heard where the board is on the HOA documents, I, and as Mr. Watson said, and as I said at the outset, all of Mr. Garfinkel's comments are acceptable to us. So my anticipation is that we are gonna fold that into, uh, our submission for the February meeting, the, the, the plan. And I'll get revised HOA documents to you as quick as I can. I think. We can work out the HOA. Yeah, yeah, but, but I think, I think, I think the, the plan itself is something that we can get to the board for its next meeting. That would be great. I'd be much more comfortable if the board approved, found it acceptable now and then went on to grant final, rather than granting final subject to submission of acceptable pond preservation. Let's see what we can, we'll, we'll get it to you and we can then go from there. Fair enough.
Okay. Margaret, are you selling past the clothes? Cause I was just trying to move on.
No, I, all I wanna say is that we're getting to the point where we're going to hit another bat deadline. And if you're.
I appreciate it. We're not gonna change our decision at this point. I don't, I, we, we got, we gotta get Ts and Is dotted and crossed at this point.
Right, but if you have your Ts and Is and dotted and crossed and you're ready to approve those at the next meeting, why do you have to wait for another meeting to approve the resolution if everything else is set?
The second largest thing this board has done in the last fifteen years and we're gonna make sure, as my colleagues have shown, that we are doing all the right things. I don't want bat seasons or tree droppings or all the other delays that everyone talks about, or not delays, but immediacies that try to trump it to move forward. We've got a process, we've got a public that cares and we're trying to make sure we're doing all the right things. I hear ya. I appreciate that. You're also a good advocate for your client and I think you also deserve an attaboy from Ulysses. But we're gonna keep going and I gotta keep this meeting going. So thank you for trying. I appreciate that. You're a great advocate for me as well. Thank you. All right, moving on. Rosemary Corbett, trustee. Public, second public hearing is, all right, great.
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, starting at seven thirty PM at the Phillips Town Town Hall, two thirty-eight Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, to consider the following application. Rosemary Corbett, trustee, five four eight East Mountain Road, North, Cold Spring, New York, tax map number one seven dot dash two dash seventy-eight dot one and one seven dot dash two dash seventy-eight dot four. Project application for approval of a subdivision plat. Application, applicant is seeking approval of a minor subdivision to adjust an existing division line. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard, dated at Phillips Town, New York, this nineteenth day of December, twenty twenty-four. Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Glenn, you wanna say anything?
Uh, just a little. Uh, what we're dealing with is two approved lots. One of about, if I remember, I should usually check, but I think it's, one is twenty-one acres and one is five acres. Uh, they're outlined on this board. The five acres outlined in green, the twenty-one acres is outlined in, in orange. And what we're seeking to do is change the lot line, so instead of having a five ac- small five acre lot and a, and a larger twenty-one acre lot, we adjust the lot line to make the smaller lot bigger, twenty plus acres and, and the, the, the lot, the other lot, about twelve acres. The now twenty-one, but to be twelve acre lot is already approved with a house and a, and a, and septic system and driveway. The five acre to be twenty-one acre lot is approved by the health department as to septic system and as to the driveway location and, and the house location. It's all off a private road, so we're really seeking to, we're seeking to move the lot lines around to, um, to equalize the area. And, and that's the sum and substance of our, um, of our plan.
Great, thank you, Glenn. Any member of the public wish to speak? Going once, going twice. Did we lose Cecilia? Oh, okay, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
So.
Thank you, Neil. Second? Dennis, same discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention. Motion passes. Public hearing is closed. Um, we have a note here that Andy Gower sent us about the, the Conservation Board wanting to do a site visit. Are you familiar with that, I assume, Glenn?
I got a copy of it this morning.
Okay.
I didn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, um, this is a lot line adjustment. Uh, this is not, we, we've had, in fact, I'm pretty sure we didn't do a site visit intentionally because of this. So, uh, I wonder if we can entertain a motion to direct Ron to provide the resolutions, um, barring the Conservation Board coming back to us and saying they found something that quote, um, unnecessary encroachment on wetlands, on environmental sensitive areas and steep slopes. Um, so is there any motion for that effect if we can go forward?
I'd make that motion.
Yeah, second?
But wait a second, I didn't see the thing from the Conservation Board.
Oh, it says in email that Andy has said they want to do a site visit out of this pure quote. Why don't you just read the letter? A mellifluous voice.
The applicant's engineer presented a plan for a lot line adjustment to the Conservation Board at our one fourteen twenty-five meeting. The CB decided that a site visit is warranted to ensure that if and when said parcel is actually developed, there will be no issues with unnecessary encroachment on wetland, watercourse buffers, environmentally sensitive areas and steep slopes. Beatty and Watson will flag where the conceptual septic system is planned as well as any nearby wetland watercourse buffers. Um, barring weather or snow cover, the CB should be able to conduct, conduct the visit, um, within the next couple of weeks and provide a final memo to the planning board for your February meeting. The CB is performing the site visit for due diligence. The CB does believe barring some un- barring some unforeseen issues, that this lot line adjustment will result in no detrimental effects and is thus permissible. Thank you, Andy Gower.
They don't have a reason, they're not doing it because they suspect something. They're doing it out of pure diligence. I don't know what happened at the meeting that triggered that, but that's their, that's Andy's comment. So I'm suggesting we move.
Or maybe we could go to the same site visitor?
Well, you can certainly go if you wanna go with them. I think this board voted last time three to one to not have a site visit. So, I'm, I'm, I, I, I'm suggesting, can I get a motion to direct Ron to provide resolutions for this lot line adjustment? We can.
I'll make the motion.
Neil, Neil.
I'll say.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'm not opposed, but I'm just saying I'm gonna vote until, I, I.
Then we don't, then we can't pass it cause we don't have a quorum. Uh, we, we, we need four. No, no, you can, you can, I'm not, Heidi?
Well, I don't want.
Heidi, I want you to vote the way you wanna vote. I, that's not, I was not telling you that to pressure you. I was just reminding us because three to one in a setting like this still is not a quorum. We need, we need four yeses for, what's that?
When's the site visit? Will it really be?
He said next couple of weeks.
It's not scheduled.
The next generation, come on here, Margaret. What do you gotta say? Glenn, let, give her some space, Glenn. Come on.
So I was at the Conservation Board meeting on Tuesday and, um, I advocated for my client that there really isn't a reason because there is nothing proposed to be built. There, it's not a site plan. It's a lot line adjustment. There are two lots that exist. There will still be two lots that exist. There's a pretend house location, a pretend driveway location and the septic that was shown on a subdivision met from many years ago.
But when you say, I'm sorry, Margaret, but when you say, what do you mean by a pretend driveway location?
It's a hypothetical place where you could put a house and you could put a driveway. But if somebody buys that property, they're gonna say, maybe they're gonna move five feet over here. They're gonna move it twenty feet over there.
There's no site plan approval. This is a lot line, which, Margaret, the reason why this board voted last time to not do a site visit, which we typically do, was for that very reason. But I don't wanna impinge upon my friends at the Conservation Board about their decision.
Right.
They decide what they're doing and I, whether, if anyone in this board wants to go on their site visit, that's totally cool. Um, but for now, what we're debating is, and I'm, I'm happy to retake the vote, but I'm also happy to keep what your, your abstention standing. It's perfectly fine if you wanna wait.
I'd just like to make one more point on that thing which was, which maybe it wasn't clear, but this location for the septic system, which is really the, the critical thing, and this, this lot, should it be approved, may have to come back to you. It doesn't always have to, but it may. But regardless, it's important that you understand that the health department has approved that location for the septic system in the past. And you might also check with Ron, but the standards for the septic system have been reduced because of water-saving toilets and that kinda stuff that has happened. So we have actually a s- system area reserved that's bigger than necessary for a standard three-bedroom house. So I just, in.
We're debating right, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, sometimes houses don't have to come before us because they're of a certain size and they can just be built as of right, right? And we don't have to pass on them.
Correct.
So isn't that the problem? That if we never look at the property, we won't know anything about it at all, potentially.
Let, please, Margaret, let me handle this. We're not debating whether we should have a site visit. That was already asked and answered at the last board meeting. All I, the, the motion that is on the table was for us to direct Ron to provide a final resolution for lot line adjustment. That is what is, I'm proposing. That said, we do have the Conservation Board that is saying they would like to go do a visit for their own diligence without any particular issue that came up, but just for the, for normal course of business. So we can either wait to direct Ron to hear back what happens from this site visit, or we can have resolutions prepared and then we can vote later, next, next month to actually vote on those. So I, I, I asked for a motion. Dennis made one, or Neil made one. Dennis seconded. It's on the table to vote for whether we should have resolutions produced. I'm perfectly fine. If you don't wanna do that, that is perfectly fine. There's no problem with that.
I'd rather wait to hear from the Conservation Board.
So the motion does not pass and we will move on. It's totally fine, totally fine. Okay. So that, so we'll revisit it on, in February and then we'll hopefully hear it from the Conservation Board. Okay, anything else on this topic?
Yeah, actually.
Go.
You closed the public hearing. This is technically a subdivision. It was a, a type two, I believe, action as far as.
Right.
As, as far as that goes, for subdivisions, there's a limited amount of time for the board to act, I believe, when you don't have positive declaration. I think it's thirty days. So the, it's sixty-two normally, I know, but I, I think when it's a, a type two action or, or there's a neg deck, it's, it's a lesser period of time. So the board would be asking for an extension of that time, cause I don't think it's gonna be thirty days before you come back. You're not gonna have your resolution done, so.
Well, we would like to then request that.
We're doing.
Okay.
There's no choice. If you made, you made, you, you, I grant the extension, but I do it with an objection because there's no choice here.
Glenn, I, I, my, you saw the democracy in action.
Makes me wanna be Republican.
Well, this town is, I think, sixty-five percent Democratic, so. All right, moving on. Where were we? Old business, Garrison Golf Club. It's been a fun night so far, hasn't it? It's like the Margaret and Glenn Show. You thought the program was gonna be boring, but it's been quite eventful. Glenn, I didn't know Glenn was a Democrat. I'm so happy to have you as a Democrat, Glenn. For now, for now.
Glenn, we should talk about that later on, you know, I know.
All right. Uh, Steve, you wanna catch up what we're supposed to be doing on Garrison Golf Club tonight?
It's approval resolution.
Okay. Do you wanna say anything, Adam?
Just wanna thank the board for its consideration and for the work that, uh, everyone's put in on, on this phase of the project.
All right, I actually have the resolution in my hand. Um, I'm gonna ask for a motion, a second, then we can debate it if there's any debate and then vote on getting this done. Just as a reminder, there's four of us. It needs to be unanimous for me to sign this document, okay? This is, we're talking about phase two here. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution for phase two, uh, for Garrison Golf Club, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Second?
Can I get a quick question in, Neil?
Well, let's, let's second it and then we can, second, Heidi, okay, go ahead.
I missed a couple of meetings and I apologize for that, but, um, I did, I think I asked one of the board members, perhaps Neil, to look into the handicap parking. Did you get that straightened out? Where the, where is the handicap parking for the facility?
There's handicap parking here and it, there's access to the building.
And how many spaces, did they, how many spaces were required?
There's one required.
For the whole facility?
Well, it could be two, cause there's three spots and one has to be the strict.
You know, there's a, there's a calculation, right, for.
Well, it's based on parking spaces and there's only four parking spaces, so there's really only need for one handicap spot, but we can make it two.
Okay.
It's a percentage of the parking spaces, not a percentage of.
Parking spaces down below too, right? How many parking spaces are, for the whole, the whole thing, it's how many parking spaces?
Uh, I don't remember, like two hundred and something.
Just for this phase?
For this phase, there's, there's, there's a drop-off spot here and handicap parking here. Everybody else, they're all gonna park on the other places. It's a drop-off facility. So they'll park either down below or at the garrison and, or they won't have a car and they'll be dropped off by a taxi or an Uber. So this is, this is a drop-off facility. But the whole campus itself has adequate handicap parking based on the overall concept that we, you know, from phase, overall phase.
Four dwellings. What's your oc- what's the occupancy load for the entire phase?
There are four four-bedroom units and, um, thirty-two, thirty-two units.
And you have one park, one handicap parking spot?
I believe there's only one handicapped unit.
One handicap facility in there, one, one ADA, well, how did that present itself as an ADA access apartment or something like that?
Right, so every, I mean, although anybody can reach all of the units except for the second floor ones over here. But, you know, the, these are all accessible as far as wheelchair can get in. It's not necessarily an accessible unit in, interior. Okay, but there is adequate handicap parking on the site.
I'm not concerned with the site. I'm concerned with this building envelope. You understand where I'm getting, you know, you know where I'm headed with this. Come on.
Yeah, there, yes, yes.
I know you do, I know. Jason does, you know that, you knew that I was gonna ask this.
Yeah, so there's handicap parking here.
In the drop-off scenario?
No.
Or to, in a.
Handicap parking can stay. They can stay there.
Put in, put in two and I'll vote yes. How's that?
Put in two.
Okay. Sorry.
Do you wanna, you wanna agree to that too? Okay. All right, well, small D democracy works. No, it's fine, totally fine. Appreciate that. Uh, someone will appreciate that down the line, Neil, so thank you. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, what, what?
If you're going to approve this subject to installation of a second handicap spot, you need to amend the motion to approve the site plan subject to revising the plat, the, the, the plan to have a second, uh, a second handicap spot installed. So you need to amend the motion to approve.
How about I just take the motion again?
You could withdraw it and just make the.
Let's withdraw the motion. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution with an amendment to add a second handicap unit, is that what we're talking about? Carrying spot? You're using some other, some other more highfalutin language there, but okay. To amend to add a second handicap parking spot. You have a motion to that effect, please? Thank you, Neil, second.
I'll say it.
Dennis, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion passes. I will sign this document with a flourish, and we can say thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
You are welcome. It is amazing how the team has shrunk over the many months. What's that? All right, there you go, there you go. All right, uh, next order of business, Cape PB Properties, you, uh, with, in my absence, you... You all, you all attended the site visit. Maybe Ron, you want to give us the highlights of that site visit?
Sure, on January fifth, a week ago Sunday, the four members of the board were able to inspect the project site. Uh, they identified, um, a variety of issues that require plan revisions, some clarification on the, on the disturbances involved with the access from Route Nine, which is proposed, does not currently exist. Issue of, um, areas with steep slopes that might be encumbered by the site access that should be better identified on plan. Discussions about the landscaping that's proposed, and the need for some cross-sections through the property so they could better understand the issue of visibility or screening that may be appropriate. Now, they're all identified in a memorandum you have from my office, dated January sixth. Uh, the memo has also been provided to the applicant's consultant so they can initiate revisions to the plans.
Anyone else want to comment on what they saw on the site visit? Please.
I would.
Please.
I, I don't think I've ever been on a site visit where there was so much plastic garbage everywhere. It was appalling. And I would just say that we have incredibly clean streams and clean water in this area. And that is an incredibly unique asset that we enjoy in the town of Phillips Town. And to see a site covered with so much plastic garbage, including shredded plastic bits that are gonna end up as microplastic in our streams, I think it's ver, it was very upsetting to me to see that. I don't, I've never seen that on another site during a visit before. Shredded plastic garbage pollutes our streams horrifically. And these, this is the water that's going to the Hudson, and that is gonna pollute this entire area. I think it's, they should be obliged to clean up, especially the shredded pieces of plastic that are everywhere, all over the site. I'm not talking, I mean, maybe crushed, uh, water bottles will not decay for a few, you know, decades, but there is enormous amounts of shredded plastic all over the site. Microplastic infects our body systems. It affects our children. You know, it, it, it's, it's a huge environmental problem. And I think it's incredible that we could be invited to a site and look at it in that condition.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay, Margaret, did you want to say something?
I, I, there was some plastic. I didn't think that the whole site was covered with plastic.
All over the south side of the site.
There is, there were pallets, I believe, that had like some sort of plastics. I know, I know there was, I know the site was not neat, was not tidy.
It's not that it wasn't tidy, it's polluting our waterways to have it like that. I will, I can send you photographs that I took. I can't, I can't understand how anybody, especially if you have children, how you could object to cleaning it up so we don't have microplastics in our children's breast milk.
I, I understand. And the reason that they want to have a building is so they no longer have outdoor storage of anything, and it will be within the building. So then, plastic won't decay, because they won't be rained on.
Well, it's all over the site now.
All right, I think, I think we got it established. Okay, other, any other comments on the site visit? Okay, so where are we, Steve, on this thing, then?
Question is, uh, whether you're ready or not to set a public hearing. Like, Ron can, you know, he's, he's indicated in his memo.
I do have some visuals, I do have some visuals.
Indicated in his memo that I think that the plan is pretty well said. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Ron, so, I mean, I don't, don't see why you wouldn't set a public hearing.
The plans do require a variety of revisions, including additional cross-sections, so you better understand visibility, screening, and...
Those I do have to present to you.
I'm sorry?
I have, I have, um, cross-sections to present on boards.
That you want to present tonight, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Floor of course.
This... This is a cross-section, this is Route Nine. Um, goes through the site, and this is the proposed building. And this is, you know, where, um, the screening trees will be. Basically, this is through, it's from here through to here.
Margaret, could you point out on that cross-section where that stone wall was? On the first, on your first drawing?
There's a stone wall?
No, well, it runs parallel to Route Nine, right where you figured it, right there.
Okay, so that's the first stone wall?
Show that on the cross-section, please, just for reference.
Oh, I don't, I don't know if, um, whoops, that's gonna be about here.
Okay, where it levels out, okay, I see, got you.
So, um... The, yeah, so the stone, the retaining wall will be about here, and then this is where the new screening trees are. Um, if someone were to turn, they would probably maybe see the roof. Um, also, if you're going at fifty-five miles an hour, you may not even notice that there's a building up there.
Where does the cut start, though, on that cross-section? The, the cut of the grade? For the driveway?
Oh, so it's not through the driveway? I can show you the, the driveway profile.
If you have that, great.
Yep.
The red line is the sight line. Why do you need to figure out the sequence on the presentation? Sorry.
So there is a substantial cut in order to get the driveway in at a fourteen percent grade. This is, I didn't make this darker, but this is the existing grade, and this is the proposed grade. It, you, you reach, um, you get back to grade... When you hit about here.
Got it, okay.
So there's, there's cut through here, there's two retaining walls to hold up the driveway.
What's your grade percentage, Margaret, on the finished asphalt?
On the driveway is fourteen percent.
Right at fourteen.
Right at fourteen.
And the width?
Is twenty. Um, so, this is my first endeavor at, yeah... Superimposing a building on a screenshot that I took from, uh, Google. Um, so, you know, you're standing here at Route Nine, looking at this...
Sorry, the foreground is Route Nine?
You're standing here at Route Nine.
Oh, I see.
This is the parking lot, this is the parking lot, this is the Garrison garage. Okay? Um, there's a retaining wall, there's a slope, there's another retaining wall. This building is projected back, at the back of the lot. These are the trees beyond it, up the hill. These, this is an existing tree, these are existing. The building goes farther down, I, and the driveway would cut in over here. So these are, are trees spaced ten feet apart when they are purchased at four to five feet high. That's, that's what they would look like when they were initially planted. So these are, they're called Hollywood Jupiters, and they max out between fifteen and twenty feet high, and they'll be about ten feet, um, at their girth. So once they reach maturity, you won't see the building at all. You would see this end, because this is where the septic field is, and we can't plant any trees there.
Margaret, can I ask you one question? So does that require an enormous, because when we went to the site, it looked like it was very steep coming up from Route Nine? So is it just that all that soil on the front will be removed along Route Nine?
This is, this is actually the, uh, the property that goes with Garrison Garage, and the owner... Um, if you remember, Heidi, this is where those tree trunks were.
Yeah.
Uh, so there, there is, um, a substantial cut between the road and the building in order to get the driveway in. And I have met with the DOT, they, they have conceptually approved the location. They, um, one of the, one of the reasons that we're asking for this is because presently, they are using Old West Point Road West, which has a, you know, it has a very funky angle when it hits Route Nine. So, is it, the site distance, although it's not that bad, when I pulled out, I thought it would be worse, you can kind of see, but it, but it does come in at this, you know, um, pretty stark angle, instead of at a ninety, which makes turning on and off a road much easier. Right, so you, you came this way and turned in, right? You know, it's a little hairy.
Mm-hmm.
So this would give them direct access, um, to use the back of the parcel. Um, they're gonna keep the existing single-family home, and Ron did talk about, we have to, um, create an easement for the driveway. The owner does own both parcels.
Margaret, what kind of vehicles are going in and out?
Um, so he does, he's a landscaper, um, so, but it's mostly small pickup trucks, and he has like maybe one, I don't even think he has a box truck. I do have a list of the vehicles on site. Um, they probably have some of the little trailers in the back. Um, mostly pickups. Yeah, he has a small backhoe, I think. So it's...
Steep driveway.
It is a steep driveway, yeah.
And he can't put, and he can't lower the grade anymore, because then that moves the crest of the driveway back towards the building, and they won't make, they won't make, they won't be able to make the turn?
Well, you know, I mean, you can build a septic on fifteen percent, so fourteen isn't really that steep, you know? I mean, the roads in Peekskill are like twenty, you know? So I mean, that's steep, you know?
You know, this is day in, day out, commercial traffic with landscape trucks with long trailers.
He's got six, you know, six employees, you know, um...
Well, we'll see what the DOT says.
Yes, the, you know, I did meet with the DOT, they accepted this area there, and I'll talk with Ron about the drainage, but the drainage does come, goes in this direction, and it goes under an existing culvert in Route Nine to the stream across the street.
Okay, uh, my one comment is, uh, I think you can do a little more screening. As I understand our code, we, uh, we, for non-retail business, we gotta screen to the maximum extent practicable. And I didn't, my, your illustration, while though pretty, uh, it doesn't seem to the maximum extent to me. I feel like we can have more coverage, uh, and whether in the foreground, more for that, for, further south side, I think we need a little more coverage. So just put under some, just take a, take a stare at that picture you showed me, or us, a minute ago. Yeah, I understood the septic, I got it, so maybe there's something you can do. Maybe push the building back a couple of feet, so there's a little room. Maybe there's, maybe you put a tree on the, is it a different property that owns the Garrison Garage? Different owner, or same owner?
It is a different owner, they have a very good relationship. I could ask, you know, I mean, the, this is the, um, proposed septic area, this is the expansion, oh no, this is both, I think. Now, there's an expansion area, so, I mean, we, you know, the property line is here, so we're very close to the septic. We can talk to the neighbor maybe about putting something here on the, on the edge of the wall.
Just give it a look, please. Okay, so we need to, we need to set up a public hearing for this topic. Uh, maybe we can just sit and let, Steve?
It has to be reviewed, but this, this was the level of detail I wanted the board to see. So if it's, if it formally gets filed for your review, that's...
Well, it's good also for the public comment to have a little more to react to. So I think we're gonna start and schedule the public hearing for the next board meeting. Can I have a motion to that effect, please? Thank you, Neil, second, thank you, Heidi, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, public hearing the next board meeting, any other top? All right, thank you, Margaret. All right, last order of business today is the Ferguson Chen application. Uh, this is new business for us. Jason, you have the floor.
Good evening. Jason Snyder with Beadie and Watson, representing the applicants, Rob Ferguson and Agnes Chen. Unfortunately, they were not able to attend tonight, but the architect, Walter Shattam, is here. So this is... This is, um, a lot, two thirty-six, um...
Hey, guys, can you just do it outside, thanks?
Old Albany Post Road. Uh, it's a one-hundred-and-two-acre parcel in the town's rural conservation zoning district. This was formerly, if you remember, the Juan Montoya, um, property, when we did that, when we did that lot, when he, when we were, did that subdivision lot, probably ten years ago, fifteen years ago. So this is down on Old Albany Post Road, just south of Lake Celeste. And, um, they have a house, they've owned it for about, um, the current applicants, or the applicants have owned it for about a year. They want to tear down the existing house. And build a new house in the, in the existing footprint.
Margaret, you got a lot of zippers going on over there. Jason, Jason can't hear, can't hear himself. Why don't we just wait till Margaret's done zipping?
So, uh...
All right, continue, Jason. They've had a year, seventeen hundred, going to four thousand something.
Yeah, so the, the deal with that is, is that although we are, the, the, the size of the house is increasing quite a bit, uh, the, the overall footprint of the, the impervious, the impervious area is actually decreasing post-development. If you look at the overlay, here's, here's the existing, this is kind of the development area here. Um, there's a lot of decks and cobble-stone walkways and driveways underneath the decks. So after, after all said and done, we actually have a decrease in, in, in the amount of imperviousness, although the house is getting bigger. Everything is happening in, in the, in the existing building footprint. The house is gonna be completely torn, uh, removed down to the, the foundation, and everything replaced. Is that, that's correct? The house, the existing, the existing house is, has a, a well, which is in, in, in the house, inside the house, in the basement, and it has a small, um, has a, a small... inside the house, in the basement, and it has a small, has a small seepage pit as the septic system. So we are investigating, we're working on a new septic system and a new well location for this, for this new five-bedroom, five-bedroom residence. We have the scenic protection overlay district along the, along the front of the property. We have a scenic ridge line in the back. We have some wetlands, pond and some wetlands and streams along the southerly property line. We're not proposing any disturbance within those areas, any areas that would be impacted by the 50 vertical feet within the scenic ridge line or the 250 feet along the road line, which is the scenic protection overlay. Everything's happening out, and even we're outside of the, the wetland buffer as well. So everything is really happening in the existing area of development.
Okay, great. Any else?
That's about it.
Okay, Steve, anything you want to add?
No, it's pretty straightforward. They're removing a smaller house and putting in a larger house. It's a 100-acre property, they need to have site planned because of the size of the house.
Great. Ron, besides your memo, anything you want to add?
No, as it summarizes in the memo, this is the first time projects appear before you. Typically, there's administrative things for you to resolve. Initially, you should classify the project as a minor site plan, given the very little new disturbance that will result. An EAF has been filed as part of the application to make that complete. However, current secret regulations identify residential projects as type-two actions, so we should declare it as type-two, and you conclude your secret responsibilities. As the applicant indicates, there's going to be a new well and septic system proposed for the expanded residence. That requires referrals to Putnam County Department of Health, and since the property lies along the town boundary, it should be referred to Putnam County Planning. And again, the, given the extent of regulated steep slopes in the area, it might be appropriate, just for common purposes, to refer it to the Conservation Board. Although, as the applicant indicates, it's not expected that there'll be any impacts to those regulated features.
Okay, excellent.
Ron, why is it going to county planning?
It's along the county boundary.
It abuts the...
I said county, I'm sorry, it's a town boundary.
Putnam Valley, in the back, yeah.
There you go. So those referrals need to be made. As Steve's indicating...
Putnam Valley or Putnam County, sorry?
No, Putnam. Putnam Valley is the best.
Oh, all right.
There you go.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Typically, you make a referral to the local fire department.
Yeah.
Continental Village, and then you should determine whether you want to conduct a site inspection of the property.
Good. Okay. All right, gang, questions?
You have to cross a bridge to get there, did I see?
There is a, there is a culvert, it's a culvert.
What kind of shape is it, can it handle the, can it handle the construction?
It's being repaired now, strengthened, but it's been there for four years.
Yeah, and they, they also built the garage using, so there's a, there's a detached, three-car detached garage with an apartment over it that was built, using that as, as well as the pool.
So you've had some heavy equipment go across it without it? It's wide enough, it's wide enough for, for current emergency access?
The dam slipped a little bit, so they're rebuilding that.
Any else? Heidi?
I mean, we're going to have a site visit, right?
Well, we're going to vote on that, yeah, but any questions?
Because I mean, just looking at the map, it looks like the Alps, you know? Like, there's so much, the topographical map, or whatever that is, back behind the pic, the pictures of the house make it look really steep.
It's kind of built into the, into the hillside, and the intention is to utilize the existing...
Retaining wall.
The existing retaining walls in the back and incorporate that into the... It was being pushed off a little bit.
We're building on the house site.
Sir, why don't you come up to the microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Walter Chatham, architect. So we're building it on the existing house site, and as Jason said, because of the terraces and decks, we're actually reducing the, the footprint, the impervious footprint of the house. And because we're building it where the existing house was, we're not touching the slopes at all. So there's the retaining wall, there.
You'll, you'll see.
Okay, because I just don't know anything about, like, in the construction of such an edifice, I mean, does that affect, you know, is it, where you have such steep slopes? I, I, it doesn't matter, I mean, I, I don't know anything about it, but I'd rather just see it with my own eyes.
Yeah, no, you'll see, there's a, what I'll call a tenderized area around the back of the house where I imagine they built this retaining wall and they filled in behind it, so there are paths and almost level areas up behind before the steep slope, and then we will build on the other side of that, so there should be plenty of room to stage construction and build the new house. And we're also pulling it a little bit away from the retaining wall, so there'll be a construction gap also.
Other questions? No? Well, it looks lovely, they're lucky to have you as an architect, I look forward to seeing this, and let's move forward. So a few administrative actions, let's, kind of a motion to declare this a minor project, please.
Remove.
Thank you, Neil, second. Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Now a motion to approve this as, or to identify this as a type-two action, including our secret responsibilities? Thank you, Neil, second.
I'll second.
Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Referral to County, Putnam Valley Department of Planning because of the abut...
No, it's the county.
I thought we said valley.
Putnam Valley.
Has to go to county planning.
Yes, I know.
Because it's on the town border.
You said county.
I said valley.
I think you said valley.
What do you want me to say, valley?
No, it goes to county planning, referral to county planning.
Okay, I thought so, but then I heard someone say Putnam Valley. Did I not hear someone say, because...
It abuts, the property line abuts the town, it, it abuts the town of Putnam Valley.
And therefore that triggers you going to Putnam County. Fine, okay, there you go. I, I rescind what I said, and I now restate it, a referral to Putnam County Planning, please. Never, thank you, Neil, second, Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Department of Health, a motion, please, to refer to them as well. Thank you, Heidi, second, Neil, all in favor, say aye. Aye, abstention, motion passes. A referral to the Conservation Board. Heidi, second, Neil, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Finally, referral to our local fire department, may I have that? Thank you, Heidi, second, Dennis, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstention, motion passes. Now, should we have a site visit?
Yes.
Yes, yes, all in favor, say aye. Aye, abstention, motion passes. What's the date that is best?
Sunday the 2nd, Sunday the 9th.
I can't do it the 2nd.
Have it the 9th.
So that's...
It's 9:30 in the morning.
Have it the 16th?
Or the 16th.
Yeah.
16th?
16th's good.
16th?
I will not be able to attend, yeah.
Okay.
16th?
16th. February 16th.
Is that okay? 9:30.
Architect can't be, can't be there that day, did you hear him?
I heard.
Why can't we do it on the 9th?
I've almost never seen the architect at one of these. That would be a first anyway.
But he seems very knowledgeable.
He does seem very knowledgeable. I think Ja, I think having Jason there is what's, Jason's there is, is important.
Can we do the 9th?
Yes.
Can we do the 9th?
Uh, I can't do the 9th. Who can do the 9th?
I can.
It's a Super Bowl, apparently. Okay, the 9th's...
Yeah, 9:30 in the morning.
9th is fine.
Do we do it the 9th?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new business before the planning board? Motion to adjourn? Second? Okay, motion passes. Good night, thank you, everyone.